Order on August the 31st, 2017. Bob, would you lead us in the pledge, please?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Let the clerk please call the roll.
Commissioner Katnick.
Present.
Commissioner Hood.
Present.
Commissioner Prince.
Here.
Attorney Clint Smith.
Present.
And clerk to the board Kelly Camper.
Present.
Thank you. Do I have any amendments to the agenda as published?
I do not.
I do.
You do?
We all received information on wildfire matters, so that needs to be addressed. I see Sheriff Firely is in the back. Shannon, are you able to stay here for a period of time? There were quite a few things that I saw in the last two weeks since we had a meeting. I don't know if you want to talk about it, such as, I'm just going to say let's put him on because there were a few things. Health insurance quotes. Also Paul Cresspin invited us and gave dates specifically to discuss his issues with us, so we need to come up with dates on that. And I'd also like to schedule a budget workshop with Donna Hobby and also have input on reviews.
Okay, I have no amendments at this time. Do I hear a motion to accept the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Is there any discussion? If they will say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We have some amendments to approve.
From the 10th and the 16th.
16th.
I've been through those. I thought they were comprehensive. I didn't see any changes to anybody else. I move then we...
I do. I didn't see where we amended the extension agents' report to include what she said about the fair being a joyful event.
I did amend it. I amended.
You did. I didn't.
But...
That's what. You've got, that's good.
Yeah.
All right. At this time, I'll entertain a motion to approve the minutes.
I make a motion to approve both the August 10th and the August 16th minutes as amended.
Second. Any discussion?
No.
All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. Now move into the public comment period. We do ask that you keep your comments fairly brief. If it's something that needs to have discussion, we will put it on to...
We need audience.
Hmm?
Audience introduction first.
I'm going to.
Okay, you just said public comment. Yeah, okay.
Oh, yeah, I'm getting ahead of myself. Anyway, these two items go together. As we make comments, it's Sunday, it's going to take a while. We need to put that back on the agenda so we have time to address it. This time, I'd like the audience to introduce themselves, please, if you would, and we'll start over here. John Johnston.
Harvey Mosquita.
Kathy Rice.
Linda Washington.
Bob Siderhoff.
Back there?
Dale Mullen.
Elizabeth Harmon.
Kevin Taylor.
In front of you?
Charles Vogel.
Bill Parker.
Dana Chester.
Jan, over here.
Jackie Bubus for the Sentinel, please.
Ann Barthin.
James Johnson.
Glenn Show.
Doug Jouris.
Jason Holden.
Dan Fisher.
Dennis Crow.
Ann Wilson.
Jackie Hobby.
Zoney.
Tony Demay.
And in the back of the room?
Rocket Pittman.
Cindy Howard, Office of Emergency Emergency.
Shannon Barter, sure.
Is there anybody I missed? Okay, well, thank you very much. Now we'll go to the public comment. I'll open the floor to public comment at this time. Yes, ma'am.
I'd like this on the record. I have a question for Mr. Prince. Because the original building codes proposal that you brought includes having a single county building inspector, and since that will be a financial benefit to the town of West Cliff, and since you have a financial interest in the town of West Cliff as their attorney, will you recuse yourself from further decisions regarding a building code?
No, I will not.
Okay.
Anything else? Yes?
I would like for the record the following statement. I'd like to include the July 19th, 2017 statement made at the BOCC meeting in San Isabel regarding the First Amendment rights of citizens. And that statement further said that the Custer County citizens need commissioners who govern with accountability, compassion, due process, truth, and transparency in order to foster community trust and protect your civil liberties and rights. At that time, we stated the current county commissioners are not fulfilling these needs, allowing intimidation and an atmosphere of fear to permeate throughout the county, making citizens and public employees fearful of signing the recall petition. The recall petition signed by hundreds of Custer County citizens put all three commissioners on notice that their governing by intimidation, harassment, and interference with their First Amendment civil liberties and rights was unacceptable and to have the commissioners recalled from their office. Since that certification on August 25th, 2017, new reports have been received that the county commissioners have called several citizens with subtle indirect questions, demands about their reasons for signing the recall petition, and intimidation in return with respect to their and their families, jobs, and businesses. The Take Back Custer County Recall Committee hereby demands the current Custer County commissioners immediately stop all forms of their intimidation and harassment to Custer County citizens now and in the future. Failure to do so may result in legal action.
I find this extremely offensive. I find a lot of untruths in there, and I want that also stated on the record.
You have the right to do that.
Just a minute, ma'am. Okay? Okay, anybody else got some? Yes, sir. Go ahead, Dennis.
I had, Dan Fisher had two, two questions. Oh, I'm sorry. I misspoke. One was, I heard when I was walking through town the other day, that there's an embarrassing situation developing in the county where citizens see county employees not working with their equipment. This is in road and bridge. And there's a reason for that, I understand. We're down to one water truck, and yet apparently, we still send out three graders out into the field, and you end up having two people sit and not work. And they sit, and they sit, and people drive by and they see that. And I heard, this is hearsay, that one of the drivers was yelled at by a citizen. "I pay my taxes, why aren't you working?" He can't work. There's only one water truck out there that's in operation because the other one got tagged by CSP, and you can't use it, so now you're down to one water truck in the county. That's an embarrassing thing that I would like to see addressed. You don't have to do it today. I'll let that go, and that'll be it for now. Thank you.
Okay, I do monitor the road and bridge activities. I've got a radio listed most of the time, and I assure you, the equipment that we have is being run to the max. The policy is, if we can, to water the roads before we work them, because we can get a better, a better work on the roads. This is an example of the issues we have, because we've not replaced road and bridge equipment in the past years. And the equipment we have is, some of it's sold, some of it's bought out, and until such time as we can address those, I assure you, they're doing all they can with, with what they've got. But thank you for your comments, and I appreciate that, and I'll pass that along, because there's also another thing to realize, folks, with the road and bridge, is that they normally don't just, don't take an hour for lunch. They'll eat as they have time to eat. If they're waiting for a truck, waiting for material, whatever, oftentimes, that's when they'll take the lunch breaks. But I do know that, in listening to them, I don't see many wasted efforts, but I agree with you, and I've asked both Gary and Roger to prepare a list for us at budget time, the equipment that we think we're going to need, the equipment that we need to replace and kind of prioritize that. We've got some other county equipment that's, that's operating on wing and a prayer. And I, we, our county shop people are kept busy. Byron knows some of this old equipment. They know the quirks of it. But same time, and I want this also to be on the record today, we're running into some difficulty getting our sheriff's equipment fixed, partially because of overlook. So we need to, if we're going to be addressing that, how can we be more efficient in getting this stuff back on the road? Because Shannon's had some equipment that's been down for a period of time, and he really needed that, that unit in service on the roads. Okay, Dennis?
I'd like to comment on that one, too, as well. Somebody, I've worked construction for a long time, and I can tell you, it's really perturbing when people who don't know what they're talking about start yelling about equipment sitting still. It does have to stop every once in a while for other equipment to do work. There's a process, there's a reason for it. Our road and bridge crew actually does a really good job.
I appreciate that. They have spent a lot of hours, and I know we've changed a few policies, but I appreciate your, your comments about road and bridge.
The other thing, you know, last time I was talking to you, you said I didn't grow up here. When I made a comment.
Sure, go ahead.
So I have my school transcripts. Would you like to read them?
No, I assume that they're correct. My point being, at the present time, there's, let me just, they're dressed as generally, folks. We have many people who maintain an address here in Custer County but don't live here over, over 51% of the time.
I've been in and out of the county throughout my life.
But, but you haven't, I'm not going to get into this specific case. I'll accept your, your comment and go from there. But we have a number on our voter rolls who are not qualified to be registered in Custer County. When you sign in and you register to vote and you declare that this is your primary residence, if that's not the case, you're committing perjury.
Do you not see the address?
That has nothing to do with it.
I live here. I show up here every day when I'm home from work.
And where do you work?
In Salida.
Okay.
That doesn't matter.
I'm not going to argue this. I'll take your, I'll take your remark, and we'll go from there. You live out here at your folks' place?
No. Read the address. Would you like the address?
I'm not going to argue with...
I actually own property as well.
Okay, well, that's fine. I'll find you out of order, and thank you for your comments. Anything else? Yes, ma'am.
My name's Linda Washington, and I'm new to the county. I've been here for a little over a year now. I did vote for one of you during the last election, and I did sign the recall. And I do know that the recall effort has gone through, and now we're in the process of recalling the entire commission staff. With that being said, I'm hoping that from now through the election, you don't take the embarrassment or the anger, whatever it is that you are feeling about this recall, and take it out on the citizens by, whether it's voting for something that we don't want you to be voting for, that you change your mind. Don't do things in a rash manner, please, because of the recall going on.
Any other comment?
I take that offensive. I'm a professional. I will treat everything professionally from this day forward, as I have from the first day I took this office. I raised my hand, I swore how I was going to handle it. I will continue to handle my duty until the day I leave this office, whether it's November 7th, or it's year 2020, or whenever I leave. Telling me to be a nice person is offensive, and I appreciate, don't appreciate what you're saying.
Any other comments? You already had one, ma'am. What else do you have?
Well, I had a comment on the lunch hours with the road and bridge, because by law and the personnel men only have the lunch hour and some time for lunch, so they need to make sure they get something.
They do.
Well, you said they didn't take lunches.
They, they will eat their lunch, they'll take a lunch break while they're waiting for other equipment to arrive.
Thank you for clarifying.
Incidentally, folks, for the rest of you, all the employees in the courthouse work seven hours a day and get paid for eight, they get paid for an hour lunch break. So make that a record also. Okay, anything else?
Bob, our hours got changed. So we work eight hours a day, and then we work from eight to five.
Your hours were staggered.
Yeah, you're right. Flex time.
It's flex time, Jackie. Let's, for the record, state that fact. So you are not working from eight to five.
Eight to five with Friday's flex time break.
Okay, anything else? Okay, let's move on. Question items.
I've been working with the airport. They had no idea how to do a budget or how to read one, so I went and taught them how to do that. We prepared a budget that we'll be submitting. They had some items that they expected the county to pay that should have been coming out of their budget. I'd explain that to them. So I've worked with them pretty closely. I've worked with zoning and planning. We took a field trip, was it yesterday, day before?
Day before.
Day before yesterday, to look at an issue that'll be coming up a little later. I've met with the public health nurse, just to update on what's going on and her activities. And Department of Human Services, we're still working on the performance appraisal. That's what I'm up to. Go on.
Sure. I've been in communication with Jeffrey Wood, who is the architect that's been working on our county building assessment. The report is done, and the commissioners should receive this report hopefully by the end of next week. What we're looking to do is schedule a public meeting so that they can present their findings of our county buildings. He's asking for either a Monday, Tuesday, or Thursday evening, a date on that, and if evening's not good, then a daytime meeting, and he's specifying that that would need to be on a Friday. So I'm going to ask my fellow commissioners to please look at their calendars now, so I can give him a date and we can schedule that, excuse me, public meeting.
Can I make a suggestion?
Sure.
I want to be a little looking.
He's saying either a Monday, Tuesday, or a Thursday evening, or if it's Friday during the day, or if it needs to be during the day, then, then a Friday. And I guess I'm going to suggest that we don't do during the day, because I think it's imperative that as many citizens that can come to an evening meeting hear this assessment of our buildings.
How about Monday, the 11th?
I can't do the 11th.
Okay. Do we do the 12th?
Can do the 12th. You want me to see if you can schedule the 12th?
Just do that.
What time?
Publicly, why don't we make it six thirty or seven, so they have a chance to get home and whatever.
Because he'll be coming down from Denver with the students.
Start at 5:30.
5:30.
5:30. And where we're going to have this?
We'll have it in the courtroom.
And this, this will be a workshop, not a BOCC?
No, this is not a workshop. This is a scheduled public meeting, which we are hosting, so they can give the report.
Is it a BOCC meeting? Okay, just want to make sure. So we'll need a post-it.
Next, I'd like to give an update on the, where we are with video streaming. We only have two other pieces of equipment that have to be ordered, the microphones and a mixer. Been working with the Open Media Foundation and Chuck. All the other equipment is in, so what's left is for me to sign the contract so they can come down. That contract binds us to the software and the match of $3,000. So $3,000 from SIPA on that grant and our $3,000 matching. So I'd like to just mention that I...
I think we have to have board action in order for you to sign.
Okay.
Can I ask a question? Do we have the internet capability for the streaming?
Yes.
That's acceptable?
Yes.
Right.
So I'd like to make the motion that the contract be signed, so we can have them come down and do the training on the software and proceed with agreement.
I'll second that.
My question is, is there something that we need to see?
I probably shouldn't look at it, yeah.
Yes.
I have a question about...
Go ahead. Commissioner speaking.
CSU extension.
Wait a second. We had a motion in a second.
We have to go.
It's probably appropriate to hear comments at this time.
Okay. How about if we rephrase that motion that with, if the, if legal counsel approves the contract, we authorize, we give approval to go ahead?
I'm fine with that.
I modified my amendment.
Did that work for you?
My permission to say that.
Yes, I can modify the motion. No, come on. It's more of just a sort of an agreement on how things are going to be done. As a contract, a legal contract, it's deficient, but as far as an agreement to go forward, is this one that would, is going to be paid for out of the...
The grant, the grant, $3,000 grant.
Okay.
So that's basically a purchase agreement?
It's just an agreement to pay an hourly wage, as I understand. That's the only dollar amount that's mentioned in here is the, the hourly amount.
Here's the...
There's not any purchase agreement?
It's not really a purchase agreement. When SIPA prepares the grant and we've received approval, Clint, that's what the approval is on.
Okay, here we are.
Well, today is Thursday. Tomorrow's Friday. Monday's closed, we have meeting on Tuesday.
I don't see any problem with it the way it is. I just have to leave that other page, so that's fine.
Anything else, okay?
Yes.
Okay, I will now, uh, comment.
I just have a question.
Go ahead, yes, ma'am.
Two questions, actually. The, the matching funds are coming from, what, general fund?
We actually have $25,000 in an account to match funds, and that's where this is coming from.
Okay. The other question is, are there, is Chuck going to be actually doing, running all this equipment and doing all this in addition to his job, or are you looking to hire someone else to do this?
We don't need to hire, actually, we can have Brenda do this.
Okay, thanks, ma'am.
You're welcome.
Thank you for waiting. I wanted to finish over that issue first. Okay, what else, Heather?
Okay. Excuse me. We have to boot.
All in favor, say aye. Aye. Opposed, same sign. Apologies.
Next, we, all three of us received an email from Bill Noble, who is the Teaks and Plains Regional Office Director from Colorado State University. And I'm just going to read his greetings. "We are ready to start moving forward with the CSU County Extension Director, 4H Youth Development and Agriculture and Natural Resources, Custer County, West Cliff. At this point in time, I am in the process of building a search committee, and I need a county commissioner or a designee to represent the commissioners to serve. The search committee will consist of a commissioner, agents, specialists, and two community members, and an OEO representative, and a search chair. In this process, a search committee is identified, a position description is developed, which I have attached for you to take any suggestions, and two interview dates will be determined once the position is forwarded to CSU, HR, and OEO as finalizing the process. This timeline will allow for applications to be submitted and references to be checked as well. The interviews will take place first in Pueblo at the CSU Regional Office with the search committee, and second in West Cliff, so community members can participate. The second interview will also include the other commissioners, so input can be given to determine the best fit for Custer County. We take very seriously the community's input, and will deliver the recommendation to Lou Swanson, who is in the hiring authority for all extension positions, to make the final decision. Let's hope we get this process started as soon as possible, and I hope to hear back from you soon. If you have any questions, please call or email me. I've attached the position description for review. This was dated Sunday, August 20th. I have been in contact with Mr. Noble and told him that we weren't having, wouldn't be able to have this discussion until today's agenda, and he was fine with that. So I guess between us, we have to decide who's going to be that commissioner."
How did, how does he suggest you, to elect the community people? They'll, they'll do it, or people will...
He, he's not there. The only thing he's requesting at this time is a commissioner.
Would you be willing to accept him?
I would be willing.
Can I ask you, Jay?
No, I think Donna is our representative for 4H, and I think she's done an outstanding job, and I'd like her to stay.
Thank you.
You are hereby appointed as a representative.
Okay, I will give him that information. Next, I just have some personnel announcements to address. On Monday, August 28th, the Board of County Commissioners received a resignation regarding retirement, retirement from Chuck Iapolito. And I just want to read that. "Commissioners, this is to inform you of my intention to retire and leave my employment with the Custer, with Custer County on December 31st, 2017. My 12 years here at the county have been one of the most rewarding jobs I've ever had. As the county's first IT/GIS director, it was an honor and a privilege to help the community improve and expand their use of technology to make employees' jobs easier while providing better service to our residents and visitors. Thought I brought a lot of experience to the job. I've also learned so many new skills, and the work was always challenging and fulfilling. The geek part of me had loads of fun. Please let me know what I can do to help with the smooth transition of my work to another employee. I have truly enjoyed working at Custer County and will miss seeing my coworkers every day. I wish everyone that there's nothing but the best for the future. Please feel free to contact me if you need additional information." So, yes.
I just want to comment that I think Chuck has done an excellent job, and I'd like the county, when it comes a little closer to his retirement time, to acknowledge that in some form, maybe a plaque or a certificate, maybe a small party, something to honor him for his excellent 12 years of service.
Okay.
Does any of you know... As many of you know, Chuck has had some health issues for a while, and he's a tough son of a gun. He just keeps on ticking, and we're very appreciative of all the time and input. He's written a lot of programs for the county. He's written a lot of, well, he's interfaced, so our offices can work together to a degree. He's put up with slow speed equipment, and I think he's done a tremendous job.
And with IT, I just want to mention that we are still researching a phone system. One of the issues is regarding new technology works off the cloud. So we don't really have that broadband right here at the courthouse to walk, work off the cloud. We've got it at the sheriff's office, but we'd have to get up to speed with that. Some initial quotes that came in, we're actually looking at about $25,000 for a new system. So I'll be working with Chuck next week with regards to budget, but just know that the research is still happening with regards to a phone system. On another personnel issue, we actually have placed an ad in both papers for a part-time buildings and ground maintenance and scale operator. And that has been placed in both papers. As we move forward to the fall and the winter, we find a necessity to make sure that we have a person in place to do all that. Okay. Also, I guess, Clint, I've been working with Donna Hobby since we received the resignation of John Paquette, and I'd like to have you do a resolution, because I'd like to make the recommendation that the county commissioners appoint Donna as the new financial officer. So we just need to do this in the proper way, and want to have discussion on, just as a reminder, John is leaving the end of November. It's in our best interest that she has this interest to step up to the plate, that she trained with John as soon as possible. So Clint, I guess I'd be looking to see how soon you could do a resolution so that we could make this official.
I can have something for you very soon.
Okay, thank you. Any discussion?
I would just like to reiterate, folks, that you see the appointments that the commissioners make, including these. And all, all those appointments, the people there serve at the pleasure of the commissioners, and they also are responsible for reporting to us. And as we go through processes, I think this is important, you understand, we did this with a whole list of committees and a whole list of county appointments. So that's a process that the commissioners have the authorization to go through and do a point. Is that right, Bob?
Right.
Next, I just want to give an update, because I've been talking about our front door issue, and Brenda's gotten a few quotes, and I sat and I spoke with Chuck this past week. We still don't have a solution, so Shannon, I still need to come and see you. Some of the solutions we were looking at was a magnetic door. Well, if our electricity goes down-
The door's open.
The door's open, so that's really not a great solution. So I need to move forward and research that. So Shannon, I still owe you a visit to come and see what you have there.
One of the issues we have, folks, with the lock that's currently over there, you basically have to get down on your hands and knees and go up to lock it or to unlock it. I've seen lots of locks like this, but usually the set screw is on top where you can get to it. And there's times that door doesn't come completely closed. Bob's grinning over there, he's been through that.
Well, I want to thank Kelly, because right now, she's been the one opening and closing, so I appreciate that. Brenda's helping to open and you're closing, so thank you for doing that until we have the solution, but just know we're working on it, okay? And that's all I have.
Okay. We've got a couple, three items. I went out on a weed inspection twice this week. The lady out towards Lake Dewey's that is very concerned about keeping weeds off her property. We have a piece of property right next to it that is just growing. I've had, met with an RCS out there yesterday, will do some more. I've not found anything that's on the A-list for mandatory control, but we'll continue to look, or we'll be probably contacting that owner and asking if he would take some voluntary action. I agree that it's a source of seed over to her property, and I'm still trying to figure out what we can do and how we can do it and not respect both people's rights. So if it were noxious weeds and had to be controlled, we have a process, or we went through that last year, where we sent some letters and actually had to have the attorney and so forth go out and visit with this landowner. I just don't think to that point. But anyway, we're following through on it. The second one I have, excuse me, we had a bid on the bridge on Grape Creek. Danny, I'd like to visit with you later, where, in your construction, that they want about $300,000 to replace that bridge. I feel that is so far out of line, it's not reasonable. We hosted a committee meeting of the Central Front Range Transportation Planning, a meeting of CDOT, and then after the meeting, I went out there with three of the CDOT people, and they agreed that that was overpriced. We're still going through this. I just, I can't, I'm, by the time all the federal regulations and the stuff, it just seems to me like it's going too far. I don't, I just can't see a quarter million dollars in three culverts across the creek. But we're still working on that, and we'll still be addressing it. The last one I have is an announcement we'd made before, but right now, according to the fiscal year 2018 projects for the, for CDOT, we have a bit of a question, but first we have from the Warfno and Custer County line north, that will be from mile post 42 to mile post 50, so that's about eight miles, that will have an inch and a half mill and overlay on the, on the highway. And then they also have another project from mile post 29, which to me, I think, is just about Gardner, up to the, up to the state, the county line. And that one, they said it was a thin, ultra-thin, and I questioned them, and the engineers said, well, they would, they would get some more details and get back to us, because an ultra-thin coating on there, even though it's, it's not in our county, people cross that to come to our county. But those are the LNU projects currently that they have scheduled for us next year. Now, there will be some, let me explain this. CDOT has construction projects, this kind of falls into that, and then CDOT has maintenance projects, which is a separate area. The maintenance people don't talk to the construction people. The stuff you see out here on 96 was maintenance work. The stuff we've done on 69 has been maintenance work so far, but they are coming in with the construction dollars to go forth. Yes, John?
On the first comment you made about the weed program, no, not for sure, Chairman, the term for the lady, do we still have a weed advisory board or whatever?
We do, and we also have, have had an active weed control problem all summer, and the NRCS has been administering it. The grant monies they have have basically almost been extended, so we're active and we're doing things, and we will be having a meeting with that board. In the past, Extension carried it. Extension traditionally doesn't do that, and I believe someplace I saw that Mr. Noble really didn't want Extension to be the weed person. It's a, it's a broader base than that. Now, our Road and Bridge take care of the weed control on the county roads, and they are part of the weed control committee.
May I ask who is on the board, if you remember?
You can, I can't tell you without looking at it. We do have, I'm not going to go through this and miss some, we have three private individuals, and that is, help me out.
Roger Gregg is one.
And-
I don't know, Brenda could probably pull that up pretty quick.
Yeah, could you pull that for us, Brenda?
Yes. Do you want me to print it?
The, yeah, and the majority of the board is made up of public official, or public employees, and the problem there is, is that the public employees have limited authority, limited the ability to serve on some of these because of their individual respective policies. Rick Romano was the chairman of the board, and Rick stepped aside as chairman because it was in violation of USDA policy, but he has still continued to spearhead it and worked through it. So, and we are, and Rick and I, when I, yesterday's an example, when I looked at this lady's property.
Thank you.
Let's see. Another issue that's going to, that we need to, Forest Service is going to have to communicate to CenturyLink. We have some cable, telephone cable that's exposed down South Hartscrabble. They said, well, they're not going to fix it until the road's fixed, and the road from Forest Service is not going to be fixed for at least a year, maybe longer, because there's still going to be some flooding, there's still going to be some rocks come down, there's still going to be some issues. They said they needed to let us settle before they did anything, before they made a determination what they were going to do. So the, a number of the folks in Wetmore are having interrupted phone service, not just because of the, of the, of the South Hartscrabble, but when their phone lines get wet, they lose service. And this is through the Greenwood area. I've asked them to pull together names and specifics for me so that we can address this, and we will be sending a letter to Senator Gardner. In the past, at least we get their attention, once the senators, they see that he's been made aware of it, and this phone service has to be, has to be improved. I just cannot, I cannot accept that we have folks that maybe we could, when it gets wet, it won't work. Well, you got a flood coming down, it's raining, it's wet, you need to call somebody, and the phones are out. We have a reverse 911, and the phones are wet, then those folks don't get notified. So that's an issue that was brought up at our San Isabel meeting and one that we're still pursuing. I do have the, the advisory board here. We have Tom Colefield from CDOT, Arlie Garrison from CDOT, Bill Donley, Dick Downey, members at large, Jeff Outhier from the Forest Service, Roger Gregg, member at large, Rick Romano in RCS, Jenna Repetti from Fremont County, Roger Squarre from Road and Bridge. Yeah, Robin was on there, but those are the committee that we have.
Thank you.
Okay? Glad to answer that. And that, I think, is all I have for announcements at this time. Okay, anything, any questions for us now? All right, I would like to, to move ahead. As soon as I find my agenda. We have the attorney items next.
Two things I need to talk about. One is Shannon and I have communicated, and I, I addressed this board previously in executive session about a security issue. Some problems have recently arisen concerning that same matter, and there's a possibility that I, we may need to take some legal action. So I am requesting that on our next meeting on September 5th, we have an executive session under Colorado Revised Statute 24-6-402, Subparagraph 4, Subparagraph B, regarding legal advice from me, and under those same subparagraphs, Subparagraph 4, Subparagraph D, regarding the security issue, I am requesting the Sheriff Byerly be present for that executive session so we can talk about that. On September 5th, there's another issue that I'm going to request an executive session for, and this is a matter that I've been working with planning and zoning for some time with Jackie Hobby. We have a, a problem that exists, and this is actually, I'm going to be requesting that the board recesses, the Board of County Commissioners go into, open up a meeting as the Board of Health, and go into an executive session as the Board of Health, again, under those same provisions, or the provision 24-6-402, Subparagraph 4, Subparagraph B, where I can give you legal advice and discuss some options regarding a serious violation of a wastewater treatment problem that's been going on for some time, and at this point, I think Jackie has exhausted everything she could do on it, and we have a nearby resident who's complaining, and not just us, but now has gone to CD, PAG, Colorado Department of Public Health and Environment on the same issue. So I think it's imperative we take some fairly quick action on it. So those are the two things I'd like to discuss in executive session on September 5th. Okay? And for that one, I am requesting that Jackie be present, and possibly the neighbor who has been making the complaints. That person is being very cooperative, and I may want to have her present as well.
Would she be present for the entire meeting, or just present in the discussion part of it?
Just in the executive session part of it is the only part that I would-
But she would be present through all of the executive session?
Um-
Or just present during the-
We could excuse her.
I'm just, I'm just asking, I don't-
No, and that's, I hadn't really thought about it, but I think as far as getting some information from this person, we would have her there, and then we could excuse her when I can just explain. Right now, I see at least two different ways we can go on this legally, but I just wanted to confirm and make a record, although if it's an executive session, it won't be on the record, but when we come out, we could make a record on that and go forward from that point.
Anything else?
No, those are the only things I wanted to talk about.
Phew, okay. New and old business will be next. I make a motion that we approve the vouchers. I've reviewed them, and the rest of us have, so we can get these over and get the check started. Is there a second?
I'll make a second to approve the vouchers.
The moved and seconded for voucher approval. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye. Opposed, same sign. Motion carries. We, when we get these vouchers, folks, we get them online ahead of time, so we have time to sit down and go through them, and then you may see, as an example, I go through to see if there's anything else that I, that I've missed, something else in my pop-up. If I make questions about what a specific, specific item is, Donna will come over, will look at the bills, and we'll identify. Okay. CCI Legislative Committee Member Request. I'm hoping, if none of you want to, or-
I'd recommend that you represent us, since you're the chairman at the CCI Legislative Committee, to fulfill their request that they made to us.
Okay, I just want to make note that that's also the week that we are reviewing the budgets, and we talked about extending those days, so I don't really, the other option is that we have another commissioner in another county represent us, but I don't know if you have anybody that you-
Well, I think what we can do, though, we select our representative, and then where we can't be there, we work closely with Fremont County and Warfno and Pueblo to, you know, we have a lot of this common interest. And then what they do, this is just a legislative committee. The committee comes up with their recommendations on issues, on bills, and then it goes to the whole CCI membership for, for action. So whether we're there in person or we are represented, we still have a voice when it really before that.
But they want this filled out by September 8th, so if it's one of us or somebody else, so-
I'll go ahead and do it.
Okay.
All right. Next item, Jackie, do you want to come up?
Please. Get on that hard chair.
Well, what- Uh, well, what, yeah.
Are we all right? Hey.
Welcome.
I won't, uh, put that in my, uh...
Will you notify that person that you hear September 5th?
Sure.
Okay.
I want time.
Okay, I have a couple different things to bring to the table, but as you know, in 2005, the Planning Commission approved a special use permit for Shining Mountain and also Sky Peak Partners. Okay. Then, when that failed, we had a big discussion with the local bank about the 5% for the sale of the lots. Okay, now, I would like you to look at item 2 at this point in time, and that item 2 on this piece of paper states, "The subdivider agrees that the residential building site on Lot 2 will be on the southern side of the drainage that traverses the property." Well, during a site visit with both, uh, subdivider and, um, Commissioner Prince at two different times, and reading a report, which I have gone through twice, and that is this file, there is nothing in this file that states why this subdivider has to build on one side of the drainage instead of the other. In fact, the other side of the drainage sits higher. So, uh, Mr. Prince and I went out and looked at it. Okay, if, if you look at the whole thing in a whole, we need to, uh, probably get rid of this whole list, because it doesn't even pertain to this subdivision anymore. Uh, I would like you to, uh, make a approval that this number 2, that it doesn't matter what side of the ditch he builds on, and, um, maybe Mr. Prince could speak to that fact.
Thank you, and thanks for asking me to come out with you and look at this, 'cause I can visualize much better than I can read. Uh, there is much further down in subdivision 1 Spec Home that's either complete or almost complete. There's nothing around this site at the moment, other than streets and fire hydrants and that kind of thing. Um, I walked it with, uh, Ms. Hoppe, and I agree, not being a contractor, but it certainly appeared to me that the south side was a less desirable place to put in a house than somewhere else on that property. I, I have, I saw no reason, I didn't see that this would be blocking anybody's view or interfering with any other neighbor or any other property owner. Um, and since we couldn't find out why this was specifically put in here, I would like to recommend that we abate that particular restriction.
Jackie, you're saying that 1 through 6, you said this list doesn't pertain anymore. What are you exactly saying?
Okay, uh, number 1 has to do with the lot we're discussing. So if you got rid of that, then this whole list would be null. Uh, the subdivider, uh, doesn't have to have water rights anymore. He's annexed into Round Mountain Water and Sanitation, so he doesn't have to have a water service anymore. He doesn't have to have, uh, augmentation water plan. Uh, so the number 4 is about the Tallahassee trucking, trucking water into that subdivision. Number 3 is about the Tallahassee trucking. Number 2 is about the acquisition of getting some water rights, which is gone. The 5%, we took off, uh, a couple months ago. So I'd like the whole list, I would like a letter...
You're saying this to be null and void?
Correct.
Correct. It's already recorded.
Okay.
So now we would do another letter stating that we are starting from scratch, and we rescind this list. Uh, I already spoke with the county attorney, because usually something like this would go through, uh, the Planning Commission for a recommendation, but the commissioner signed off on it, so that's what makes this a little bit different thing. And we had already decided about the 5%.
Is this in the town? Is this in the city limits?
Uh, no, I don't believe so.
No, it's in the county. It's across from Vallee's Hardware.
Yeah, Bob, isn't part of that city or no limit? It just ends right here at the highway?
It ends at that dome house.
Okay. Clint, do you have any issue?
No, I would just, I mean, I think that's fine. Uh, a couple of questions. The adjacent property owners, is it's all still with the developer, or who has it now?
Yes, sir.
I mean, so are there aren't any private owners adjacent to this, that particular lot that...
No, sir.
Then I think this could just be done by a motion, and direct me to draft something that says that, and for, so we can report.
I'd like to make a motion that we, um, ask Mr. Smith, um, to draft the appropriate document to rescind the subdivision agreement for Shining Mountain Estates that was recorded on June 30th, 2005, recording number 00201750.
I'll second the motion as stated.
Any discussion?
Okay, so it's, it's gonna be Shining Mountain Estates LLC, and there will not be no more Sky Peak Partners.
So then Clint needs to address that letter to the first one.
I'll make reference to this, that this agreement is being vacated by action of the board.
Okay.
Thank you.
Okay, the next one, oh, sorry.
For the, for the audience here, we've read most of these. Do you understand first that they, they wanted to remove the requirement that they build on a specific site of the drainage? Uh, the water rights and augmentation plan is, is, is not an issue, because they're in the Round Mountain now, and the interim, while they're in the Round Mountain, that takes care of number 3. Number 4, the trucker subdivider agrees as if the name's a trucking company, they go out of business, will provide another, well, that's no longer applicable. Number 5, the subdivider agrees that at the time of sale, 5% of that selling price will be paid to the county under section 9-7 Public Sites, which will be collected at the time of sale. This was an issue we addressed probably, I don't know, not too long ago, but, uh, that went through a foreclosure action. The bank owned it. Uh, we tried to hold firm on the 5%. Uh, they played a little hardball with us, and we decided that it wasn't worth a lawsuit. To push it on there was gonna cost us more than what we would recoup. Normally, in a, in a situation like this, the subdivider has to do some things upfront, but in this case, it was, uh, an agreement was reached from a financial standpoint that they wouldn't have to pay for that until a particular lot, uh, was sold. So that's null, this time is null and void. Uh, and upon execution of this agreement, the county agrees to approve the final plat, which has already been done. So I see nothing here, folks, from a public standpoint, that would be an issue.
That's just on one lot though, right?
Well, the, the rest of the agreement on the water and everything is, now they're in the Round Mountain, so the, the augmentation plan, uh, subdivider agrees to pursue water rights and its attendant plan for augmentation for the lot owners. Now that Round Mountain is out there, that is, is not an issue. Uh, the next one, in the interim, if, if water will be from Cisterns and identified a company to haul it, that's not an issue. Uh, if the company went out of business, well, that's not an issue. Uh, the subdivider agrees to pay the 5%, and we've already addressed that and, and removed it. So everything on here, Jackie, I think is already, in, in today's situation, I think, the only thing that was applicable of this remaining agreement was the location of the residents.
Correct.
Okay. Any other discussion? Well, I would, uh, call for the vote. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And I would ask it to work with the county attorney, and whatever we need to draw up, to, as null and void, something...
I'll have it for you.
I think we need some kind of a document on this, on it.
So it's recorded, yes. Thank you. Do you wanna keep that, or you want me to take it? Just more papers. Okay, so the next one was, uh, approval for, uh, Glenn Choat. He got, uh, the Planning Commission recommended approval for the Bumblebee, uh, storage units. Did we all get a great look at this?
Yes.
Okay, is that much better then to follow, if I give you something like this?
Correct.
Okay, all right. Um, so we discussed, uh, situation, and then I added, uh, per working with Mr. Prince, uh, number 16. Glenn is the only one that has changed.
Why don't you read number 16, or I can read it anywhere in front if you like. Want me to do it? Okay. What we added was, what, the concern was that there's a subdivision just in front of the Bumblebees, um, uh, storage units that are going in, of Shadow Ridge, and the concern was that the increased traffic would be detrimental to the homeowners out there. So we came up with the suggestion that if put into the lease that Mr. Choat gave to his tenants with the storage units, uh, we added the following, suggested the following language, "Let's see, that'd be the people leasing the storage units, agree that the ingress and egress to Bumblebee Storage Units shall be via County Road 241, then County Road 243, and let's see, shall expressly agree that traveling through Shadow Ridge subdivision shall be a violation of the terms of this lease." And then we're putting the onus back, that's putting the onus back on the, um, tenants of the storage units to use the county roads to get to their facilities instead of traversing through the subdivision.
No problem. I was gonna put that in on my website to...
That would be great, too.
But this way, it would be an actual violation of lease, so you'd have some teeth behind it if there was an ongoing problem. That's why we added it, suggested adding it to the lease. Thank you very much for cooperating.
Well, based upon the, reading the amended use permit and recommendation of planning and zoning, I'll make a motion that we approve the special use permit under the conditions as outlined in the attached document. I'll second the motion. Question?
Yes.
Is that the words you want for your...
Yes.
It just doesn't have a date or anything on it, so, uh, all in favor?
No, it'll be attached.
There's public comment now on the motion before you vote on it. Uh, John wanted to say something.
If someone is trans, if someone is driving there in a private vehicle, is that legal to restrict this traffic?
We're not, the, the county is not restricting the traffic at all. This is a private contractual agreement between Bumblebee Storage and the people that want to lease storage containers. It's enforceable by Bumblebee Storage, not the county. We're not enforcing anything. We're not telling people they can't do it. Mr. Choat has the authority to declare the lease violated and terminate the lease agreement. It's a private arrangement. It's not something that's being enforced by the county or by the town of West Cliff.
Question whether or not it's legal, but that's his problem. Go ahead.
Pardon me?
Thank you.
Pardon me?
I was just questioning whether or not that was legal or not. That's not the county's problem. Glenn would take care of that. Go ahead. Thank you.
Any other discussion?
I just have a couple questions. Um, just in reading the meeting minutes of the Planning Commission, um, it looks like some of the people from Shadow Ridge also had an issue regarding their view. Did this go to the town of West Cliff also?
No, because we don't have a three-mile rule.
Okay.
This is in the county. If we enact a three-mile rule...
Okay.
Then we can go to, we would cooperate with the two towns, and we are actually looking at that for future things.
I was wondering how that works.
Because, yeah.
That was my question.
Donna?
Yes?
The town of West Cliff, the board of trustee, who made a motion to gate that off.
To gate it off?
Because of the concerns of the citizens in Shadow Ridge.
So you're talking about gating a property line that the...
The road, yes.
Now, wait, gated would be public, because they have taxpayer money plowing it, so you couldn't stop people from going through there.
So how, I'm not understanding...
Correct.
What the town did then?
They're going, they made a motion to gate the town road off to the county road, so they can't go through there. And I don't know what road it is.
I don't think it's legal.
So we need to take that back to the board?
Uh, because you can't use taxpayers' money to maintain those roads through snow plowing and upkeep, and then put a gate on it. That's illegal.
If it's, if it's a total private road, they certainly can do that.
Well, we'll have to take it back to the board then.
Yes.
Well, you're trying, the gate, it's not making it a gate, it's a, it's a gate on the north end there.
Right, where they can't, where people can't go through to the Bumblebee facility.
Okay.
Like a vehicle gate, a man gate, what kind of gate?
Just they, they said gated. They want to...
Okay, so that piece of paper, oh, you have to make a...
No, 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 I'm just...
I'm, I'm just trying to understand.
I mean, it's, I don't wanna step on, I mean, they've got, that's, that's town. I don't wanna, to suppose that we're overreaching.
They'll handle it with their lawyer.
And, uh, as I, as what we've looked at here, strictly on this one, I don't see anything that says that it's, you know, that we're endorsing or not endorsing what you're doing. And it is purely a, a town issue, I think. Yes, back there in the back.
Why can't the Bumblebee put the gate on their property? How does that affect if it's on their property in front of the road?
It's not.
It's not. It's Shadow Ridge subdivision with an ingress and an egress. The ingress and egress on one side comes off the Lake Dewey's Road, the other one comes off the county road 243. That is the back road to the mines where you'll hit Viscount Mining Operations and Passa, is it Passa Floor or something? No. And those mines, and that's a regular county road. Is that what you're talking about? And then, uh, so Bumblebee is a 10-acre mining claim that comes out on a county road.
Back to the original question. I understand all the ramifications that we're discussing here. Back to the documents that we have at force at this time. The only issue that I see, and help me answer, I'm misinterpreting this, was that, um, someone leases a unit, and they're going through this other road, and somebody from the subdivision complains, uh, that complaint would go to you, and you would take action. Is that a correct assumption?
Yes.
Did I state that correctly, counselor?
Yes. Yes, enforcement's up to him.
Okay, any other discussion? Not, I'll call for a question. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
All the same sign. And then, and then, and then pass us.
Okay, so that would be that letter, if he'll sign it. So that's required along Okay, the next one on the agenda is an oversized sign, and it's for Harold Jolson, and Mr. Cinderhoff is here to represent it.
I haven't seen any paper left on this.
That's what I was wondering.
This over here, Bob, on property, long 69?
On 69 North.
Yeah.
Out about seven miles. Harold Jolson's ranch.
That would be where again?
About seven miles to the north as you make the turnoff.
My uncle makes copies.
It's between Vertamont Road and the next road would be the...
The Berryland?
Yes, the Berry.
She's making copies.
Oh, okay. Now, bigger sign or you want it?
Four by eight. Mr. Chairman, may I approach the...
Please.
I'm just gonna, well, she's getting whatever she's getting. This is gonna be the type of sign, and I do not have, you know, the, I think there's two, yeah. So, it's gonna be that type of a sign. Not the same blundering. I think she has all the other information. And here's the location of the sign. It's right here on his property, 765 acres in there.
Donna has a copy on the table. Oh, I'm sorry. Out of everyone, I shouldn't forget you since you are the lawyer.
I'll sue you.
Sue me.
Sue which person else then?
So, as we're leaving, you know where it is. Do you, do you guys know where it is?
Is that Piggy Manish's place?
Across from Proctor's?
Yeah.
Yeah. That's where Piggy?
Yeah, that.
I'm sorry.
Isn't this his land around this?
Uh-huh. I think that's Piggy's house.
Yeah, it is. But the sign...
Would be across the street.
Okay, on the... It's the east side.
It'd be on the east side of 69.
Yeah, he shows on the west side here.
Well, that little rectangle is a private property. If that the sign is, is on the east side, that's the land he's wanting to sell.
Well, this is, it's not an issue we have to deal with. We approved the sign out here. For realtor? Or for sale. And at the time, I was concerned about setting a precedent. And what we have before us is basically a sign advertising a real estate company. It's not advertising a specific group. Lot for sale.
Well, yeah, it's underneath.
What's inside there? This is gonna be inside.
I know, but it's right here.
Now, wait a minute. Which sign is right?
Okay, the, the one that you have in your left hand is an example of my sign, which is gonna be, you know...
But it will contain this verbiage?
Yes.
Oh, excuse me. I thought this was what you wanted to put down. I misunderstood when you passed out our signs.
His name is right on the bottom.
Yeah. And that's fine. I understood that this was what, was the sign that you wanted.
May I ask a question? Mr. T. W., you'll maintain the integrity of the sign if it starts to peel or paint or anything like that? I am soon to...
I'm sorry, I can't hear you, sir.
Apologize, I don't speak very loud. No, sit there, I'll speak up to you. I know the answer is, but I want to ask it anyway. I know you'll maintain the integrity of the sign, so if it starts to peel or fade, you'll maintain it to look appropriate, professional the whole time?
That's correct, yes.
And the frame is really what you're showing us in this sign. You're basically just showing us the frame that this will sit into. And is that actually wood?
Yes.
Okay.
I, I'd like to say something.
Thank you.
Since we already dealt with the realer coming to the board, we actually had a document that was signed off on. I'd really like to see the same thing happen here, Jackie. This Twyla and the oversized sign. There were a list which stated exactly what Jay is talking about, that they would maintain that. I'd like to see that in writing.
Oh, you would like to see conditions?
Correct.
Okay.
Can you get those conditions for us without a long time?
Yeah. I'll go get the conditions. They'd be basically the same conditions that the Planning and Zoning Office put on...
Twyla.
Twyla's, Tony's.
So, yeah, so that going forward, any request for signage from a realtor, we've got the same process in place.
And we've done it once.
And that's, I would just like to say, conceptually, I'm fine with this. I think it's appropriate. It's a very pretty sign. I have no issues with it. But I do think that we should be consistent for all these requests. So if you're not opposed to that, I'm fine with it. But let's wait...
You said there were two requests?
There were some conditions that we put on the sign out here, like the maintenance and so forth, that made it acceptable. And I would like to, to follow those same, that same procedure, Bob, for you, that keeps it equal and, you know, similar.
Okay, I do agree to that. And I, caveat to that, is on my sign, if you have a picture up there, I have them come in and maintained that on about every other year and reviewed the entire sign in order to see.
Right. So we'll get those...
Conditions.
Oh, you already got it.
That's for the, that was for Shining Mountain.
Will this be two-sided or one-sided?
Two-sided. Perpendicular to the highway.
Chairman?
Can you just give us a minute so we can read this, John?
Yes, Doc?
Will this establish a policy for how the realtors in the future?
Yes.
Oh, I'm sorry. I think we already established that policy when we approved that first one. But I think we do have to have conditions on them.
Thank you.
So if you want to put yours up, will you find someplace to put it up?
I don't have any slides.
Any problems with it?
Nope, as long as it reads a change in the real...
Mr. Cinderhoff needs to read it.
Well, I'm gonna read it, I'll get it to you, but I'm gonna read it to the audience and the rest of you here, too. On February the 27th, we approved an oversized sign permit, which is out here across the maze. One, the sign will be four by eight feet, two-sided. Number two, the sign will not exceed eight feet in height. Number three, the sign variance will be reviewed in two years and no additional fee to the applicant. The sign will not be placed in any public right-of-way. The sign will be maintained by the, the agency putting up the sign, our current agent. And those are the conditions that we had. I'm gonna pass that to Bob. A fairly open, Bob, but at the same time, if, that that sign becomes an issue in two years, we can review it and see what's happening with it.
No problem.
Mr. Mullin?
Clarification for Ms. Hobby. In the past, the Board of zoning adjustment, oftentimes addressed and voted on and approved oversized signs. My question to Jackie is, why did this issue come directly to the commissioners rather than go to the BCA for review and approval?
Okay, it's the Planning Commission that does the oversized signs when they do a special use permit. It's part of the whole package deal. Like, if you apply for a special use permit, then you can apply at that time for an oversized sign. And since the Planning Commission only makes recommendations to the Board of County Commissioners, then it comes back to here and the, and the Board of County Commissioners would approve the special use permit along with an oversized sign.
So this is not a variance?
It is, but it's a...
Looks to me like it is.
It's a variance that the county commissioners have always done themselves, unless it's tied with a special use permit. It's just on my list that way.
When's your next meeting?
October.
Okay.
Oh, that's the way we've always had it.
I would like to see planning and zoning addressed, not necessarily this one, but as a matter of process, that they're comfortable with what you're doing and how it's going. Would that be comfortable for, for what you're looking for, Dan?
I don't know the rules, I'm just asking a question.
Well, but I think as, as a process, we, we clean that up a little bit.
I agree.
Moving forward from this point on.
Okay, I will entertain a motion regarding the sign for Custer County Realty.
I move that we approve the sign for Custer County Realty, essentially, and I'd like this to be part of the record, essentially the same, I mean, there could be minor variations, essentially the same as the sign presented, with the same type of frame and the location that was presented, under the terms and conditions that were read into the record earlier.
One second. Additional discussion? As I'm looking at your map, Bob, looks like this sign will be right across the road from that house.
That's correct, and that's where the main entryway is.
Okay. Any additional discussions? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Close, same sign. Okay, we'll get the paperwork to you, Bob.
Thank you very kindly.
Okay, is that all we've got from you today, Jackie?
Nope.
Nope?
Okay, it looks like we need to, now I gotta find my agenda. Oh, here it is. Now we need to go into the Health Department to sign a paperwork.
Right, I mean, in terms of zoning, that's all.
Oh, I don't know.
That's all I see listed on the agenda.
I have to give that to the attorney.
All right, now you want us to go into the Department of Public Health?
Please.
At this time, I will declare recess of the Board of County Commissioners at 10:25, and we will immediately reconvene as the Custer County Board of Health. Chairman of the Board of Health, Jackie, what do you have to come before us?
Okay, this is concerning what used to be Horn Creek is now Sky Peak. Sky Peak has been working for, one, to, might even be longer than that, to redo their septic system. It's a commercial septic system. It will take just probably another year or more just to go through the paperwork with CD-PHE. This is the engineer report on the first round of what the septic system's going to look like.
Can you see this, folks? That's for a septic system. Looks like three quarters of an inch.
Okay, so, now, CD-PHE wants proof that we got it. So, I need your signature right here as the chairman of the county commissioners stating that we do have the engineer report.
But that's from the first one and the new one?
This is from the new one.
Okay.
Is that saying that we approve it?
No, that's just received it.
So where do you want me to sign it?
It's, I think it has your name on it and then there's a signature box.
It's about technique with E instead of A.
Yeah, you can, you may change that.
Or change your name.
You're the one. That's what I was thinking exactly.
I signed it just on the bottom.
No, I, Donna, can you see that for me? Please.
The county, so you need to sign it one there.
Be nice if we had a signature on it.
And if you, I would, I would initial that, too, but you just need that changed. On your name. Initial there.
I don't think I, this first one, I think, is the name of the typed agency.
So...
So I sign here.
And then date.
A date.
9-1. So, there'll be some more coming our way.
Alan's actually 8:31 today.
Today's 8:31.
Oh, no.
What's the number? Do you have everything dated 9-1?
No, not. Okay, so there'll be more coming. But that's just stating the proof. So now we can go back out.
Okay, at this, excuse me?
Counselor has been asked a question, I didn't realize.
Pardon?
I, I want to ask a question, I didn't realize.
Okay, let's go ahead. We're still in session.
I just find out, Sky Ranch does have a working septic system now. That's acceptable. It's not leaking. We don't have any major issues. This is just a rebuild.
This is just, yeah. Sky Ranch has other facilities and they are due diligent on all their facilities and they just want to make sure that they get everything tip-top shape for years to come.
Excellent.
Okay, no other business before the Board of Public Health?
No.
This time, I will declare the Board of Public Health closed and adjourned, and we will now return to the Custer County Board of Commissioners meeting at 10:28. Okay. Anything else you have here?
No, that is it.
All right, let's go on to the next, go through those.
Yes.
Okay.
Thank you for your hard work, Jackie.
Thanks, Jackie. Next time on the business is a contract with the Fremont County Humane Society. I thought we had renewed this, but apparently we haven't.
No, you haven't. Okay, I've sent you a copy of it, and I do have four copies ready for you to sign if you such agree. And it lined it out, what each person or each entity's cost is. It's 30267 for the county. If we don't, if you don't do that, and you do individual, they do per capita, Custer County would be 4,855, West Cliff would have been 884, and Silver Cliff 908, if you did individual contracts. So that's why we would like to do a joint one.
Can I make a comment first? Since I have reviewed this for the town of West Cliff, I'd like to accuse myself of this discussion at this time.
So what this also allows is not only each entity officially to take animals down, it allows our citizens to do it. If we don't have a contract, they won't take animals from Custer County.
And what is the amount for all three now, if we go together?
908 is the total for all three. 30267 for Custer County, 30267 for Silver Cliff.
Versus the close to 4,000.
Right.
And can you just reiterate how long this agreement between all the municipalities has been running?
The, last year was the first year we did for 2017, a joint agreement. This will be the second year for 2018.
And I, having reviewed this agreement, have you seen this?
I haven't seen this one, but I saw the one last year.
Yeah, the only thing, the only thing that changed is...
Is the dollar amount?
The dollar amount, and it'll invoice each entity separately.
That's gonna be my question.
Yeah. Because we had an issue with that last year.
Okay. This is a, an item of business, folks. It's, do we try to maintain a, an animal shelter? This is a...an item of business, folks, it's, do we try to maintain an animal shelter, Humane Society type shelter here in the county, or do we cooperate with the folks in Fremont? From a financial standpoint, it made sense those last year to cooperate with the folks in Fremont. And in looking at this, as we've been explained to us, I also think that this is something that makes sense to me. So having said that, I will make a motion that we approve the Humane Society of Fremont County Incorporated impound agreement. Do I have a second?
I'll second that motion.
Okay, let's continue with the discussion. Does anybody have any discussion regarding the item?
I just want to ask Sheriff Farley, did you have any issues with regards to this through the last year?
No, ma'am.
Okay, thank you.
Any other comments? Call for the question, all in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed, same sign. Motion carries, and I'm signing the agreement.
No, you can sign...I've got four copies here for you to sign.
Yeah.
I abstain if he makes a comment to that.
I have to sign four copies.
Yeah, I've got them right here.
Yeah, I'm going to.
Thank you.
Now, while I'm doing this, let's move on to the next item of business, and that would be the courts.
We're going to apply for a GO-CO grant to replace our tennis courts, and we're looking at only replacing, replacing it with one. So seeing how it's used by not just citizens in West Cliff, I'm asking the county and Silver Cliff to help with it, with a match of two thousand dollars possibly out of the conservation trust fund. And we will be getting bids on it this week.
And when would this, when would you move forward on this?
It would be next year.
Okay, so this, this could be a budget item that we will consider because the conservation trust funds are committed for this year.
Correct, and I will send an official letter requesting the two thousand dollars. But what we do need, when we apply for the grant, we need a commitment of that, so I don't know if you can do that ahead of time, because we're going to apply for that grant in October.
How much were you asking?
Two thousand.
Two thousand.
And that, are you looking for a new courtroom? What are you looking at?
No, not court, tennis court.
Tennis court.
Oh, tennis court.
Tennis court.
I'm sorry.
Yeah, you didn't, that's okay. Tennis court.
I got fooled by tennis court a couple days ago. Lady said I got wheezed by the tennis court, and I said, "You're in the town." She said, "No, I'm not." And I didn't realize, there's no tennis court out here off of Lake Dewey's Row. She was next to the tennis court.
Yeah, this is the tennis court in Hermit Park. So I am asking for a commitment.
A letter of commitment?
Yes.
I'll make a motion that the Custer County Board of County Commissioners support the construction of a tennis, of a new tennis court at the park, and we will commit to a share of approximately, how many dollars do you want from?
Two thousand.
Of two thousand dollars, with the caveat that this, we're doing this in good faith, but it will be determined in our final budget appropriations.
Can I accept that?
I'll second that motion.
Is there any other discussion?
So you're going from three tennis courts to one, is that correct?
We have two.
Oh, two, going to one. And is Silver Cliff going to pay a portion of this too?
I'm going to be asking them at the meeting in September.
Thank you.
Okay. Any other questions? Okay.
Thank you.
I'm glad I was thinking about the courts, because we do have that court agreement to use our court here.
We have to move on.
Pardon?
We have to move on.
All in favor say aye.
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 I abstain.
You abstain?
Yes, sir.
Okay. The record showed that the motion carried with two votes in favor and one extension. The extension, I'm assuming, is because of the potential conflict of interest between the county and the city.
Just for the record, I have not been involved in the discussion at this point with the amount of money, but I suspect in my position, I will be involved with contracting and other aspects of this, and therefore I felt it be appropriate to me not to be involved.
Is that all for them?
You can keep that one, and when we get it signed by...
Well, do you want to get these others signed?
I will. I will take this to Silver Cliff at their September meeting, and West Cliff will address it on the fifth, and then I'll bring this, all four copies have to go back to everybody, okay? Thank you.
Good job.
Thank you, thank you.
Thanks, Jackie.
Next item is the sheriff. Thank you letter, would you?
Yeah, this is a thank you letter, you know, an asset you would look at and possibly assign. I'll get your...
I could see this. I just like to eat my hand crushed.
I haven't seen it.
Oh, we just got that today.
Yeah, all it is is a thank you letter to the Car Springs Fire Department. They donated several thousand dollars' worth of diving gear to our dive team.
The letter reads, Chief Dubay, hope I'm pronouncing that right.
I hope so.
On behalf of my office, the Custer County Board of Commissioners and our citizens, we'd like to extend our sincere thank you for the donation of the valuable dive equipment to our county dive team. Your efforts to work with our personnel to facilitate the donation was extremely generous. We thank you enough. The items your agency no longer used will enable our divers to train as a team which will benefit our emergency responders and those who need a diver or rescue swimmer in our county. The equipment we receive will make a tremendous difference for our agencies. Thank you so much for allowing us this opportunity. Thank you to the city of Colorado Springs, Colorado Springs Fire Department, and Lieutenant David S. Barron from the Colorado Springs Fire Department, Station 17A, for allowing us the opportunity to improve our county services through the generous donation of these resources. We don't need any action on this, I don't think, do we?
No. I'd like to, I'd like to commend you for thanking them publicly and sending this kind of letter. It's so important to acknowledge generosity like that.
Thanks, you bet, you betcha.
Are your employees all getting certified for diving?
So, they're not, they're not employees, they're all volunteers, so they're attached to the posse, they don't carry guns and so forth, but they are certified divers, yes. Thank you very much.
While you're here, I'm gonna need to ask you a question.
Okay.
As we look at the issues of maintenance of county vehicles, what is your thought to improve the turnaround time for the maintenance on your vehicles? Have you given any thought?
Well, I've talked, I've talked to Gary about it, who's sat down and visited with Byron and tried to figure out the best way to go about doing it. I mean, there's a few, you know, thoughts to the process. One is that the shops, and so Gary, Gary really feels because it's technically road and bridge, we call it the shops, but it really isn't the county shops, it's road and bridge, road and bridge personnel, and as busy as they are, you know, maintaining the road and bridge equipment and the rest of the county equipment, that they only do routine maintenance on the sheriff's vehicles, because we have, I mean, we do have quite a few of them, and that he recommends that I build into my budget additional monies to outsource any maintenance above and beyond routine maintenance to other mechanics, whether locally or not.
And I just want the general sense...
So that's, so that was, that was his suggestion to me, although I know there's been some talk too, that perhaps there needs to be a county shop instead of just road and bridge, and so the county shops would then be their own, you know, entity, and that was actually, I didn't think of that, Gary had kind of mentioned that as well, that, because I don't want to delve into that realm, quite frankly, I have enough to worry about, but he had thought that possibly there'd be a county shop instead of road and bridge, so that they take care of those, and then it's the budget and timing and trying to coordinate, you know, all that stuff.
How many dollars a year do you spend on outside? What would you be spending on outside? Would you guess ten thousand?
So, you know, I mean, so again, so you're taking basically the dart and throwing it to the dartboard, because it depends, right? If all of a sudden a transmission goes out and that costs you thirty-five hundred dollars, that skews your projections. If we don't have any significant...I'm sorry. Oh, yeah, right, right, where we had, that's just a letter that, my deadline to vehicle that we're not going to repair, because it is thirty-five hundred dollars to replace this, what is it, a fifteen-year-old vehicle with two hundred and thirteen thousand miles on it? So what I was thinking to do, Bob, is I was thinking I would add about twenty-five percent onto the current vehicle maintenance budget and hope that that would cover, I mean, our fleet is slowly getting newer, so that will obviously reduce some, some maintenance costs, you hope.
The issue is, it doesn't matter where it comes from, it's still something we'd have to have happen.
Right, it's gotta happen one way or the other.
It's either gonna be on the left pocket or the right pocket.
Well, it's like this year, because I think, if I recall, my budget was twenty-eight thousand for vehicle maintenance for the year, and I'm well above that now, and so it's coming out of other line items that I have to move money around to cover, because we did have two transmissions and another significant issue that we had to have fixed, so.
I caught you kind of unawares on that one, but that's something we've had a little discussion on.
Yeah, it's...
We'll need to continue to pursue.
When it comes to vehicles, you know, you're always, you're juggling with four balls in the air, it seems like, because it just, you never know.
Okay.
Well, you want to sit in that seat regarding Century Link also?
That'd be fun, that'd be fun.
Next item of business will be Century Link, and I'll turn that to Donna and Sheriff and Cindy.
Cindy, you want to come sit here?
Whoever else here. Do you want to grab another chair?
Okay.
Okay, you're good?
Run away, this way.
Well, I just knew from our meeting at San Isabel, we had asked for a course of action, and that happened with no great results.
Yeah.
So it's like, what's the next step?
No result.
Yeah, no result.
So yesterday, I was at, I was in Denver at the New Generation 911 Subcommittee that I'm, I sit on with the governor's office, and coincidentally, sitting next to me was Tim Crunkelman, who is a regional yada, yada, yada for AT&T, and so he, he made the comment and said, "Hey, I got your email regarding that the phone issue's going on in Wetmore." Well, I didn't even realize he was on that, or he wasn't on that email string, so it obviously got forwarded up, and so he did talk a little bit about that they are looking into, and they're trying to figure out what they're going to do, because that line going over three eighty-six is not going to be feasible, because we don't know that the Forest Service is ever going to open that road again. I mean, the millions of dollars it's going to take to do, to repair it. So the problem they have is that right now, all the lines from Wetmore come from West Cliff, and I don't know, we didn't get into the specifics on exactly how they're routed, but he was saying that they're considering changing that so that they route out of Florence instead. They've still got to run line, and they've got to do some things, and they're, they're reviewing with the power company how power is distributed into those areas, and possibly if, if they can look at doing something like that. So I told him, I said, "Well, Tim, that's all well and good, but as it stands right now, myself, commissioners, the community, we look at that you're not doing anything, because you tell us nothing, you don't do anything, so if you want to save some face and maybe have a little PR recovery here, you might want to at least share that you're doing something, because right now, we view it that you're doing nothing, and that is not acceptable." And whether he glad handed me or not, I don't know, but he said that that's probably a valid point, and he would talk to his people. I mean, he's probably not in charge of that as well, but...
But I mean, we talked about if we didn't have any satisfaction, we were taking it to Tipton, Gardner.
To Senator Gardner.
I think it's what we...
I think we need to do that.
We, I think we need to do that also.
I, I talked to Paul Chrisbeam last night, you know, they, the Forest Service had also let Century Link know about County Road three eighty-six. I had let them know, I had talked to Stephanie before the San Isabel meeting. That's been passed off to Mark Molsen, is my contact now. They're saying, well, there's, you know, two separate issues, the service issues in the Greenwood area have nothing to do with the County Road three eighty-six issues. So I'm, I sent him some very specific questions about how many landlines is that line coming through three eighty-six serving, and do they have an alternate way to route that? What's their long-term plan? As far as Paul and I know, right now, that cable's intact and it's working. Paul's at least thinking they're gonna have to suspend that rather than have it, you know, down exposed like it is. I don't have an answer for Mark back yet. He also said that the Greenwood issues are primarily power-related, that the battery backup system that's down there by the general store, or not the, no, the old Wetmore stick cast, I think it's across there from that, and I talked to Jeff, I'll do some of that. So before we, I think we need to have a united front, we need to get maybe Paul on the table, but before we start going to PUC and not having our facts straight, it seems like, you know, we need to get, they're not cooperating maybe as well as they should be on the fact finding, and I think Shannon and I both pointed out to them, it's a serious public relations issue if they don't get on board with us and try to help us help them. The third thing that I'm asking them for is their collaboration on the public health grant down on Greenwood, because we're gonna have to cut some of those trees, that line that those, those twenty-twelve dead trees keep falling on is a Century Link line there. There's a power line as well, but we're gonna need their cooperation with that as well, so.
So how much time are we looking at, New Forward? Do you get a response?
Well, I sent this information on to Shannon to have that contact info, I don't, you know, want to have everybody, I'm afraid we're gonna poke a bear instead of, you know...
Well, when I said, well, you got the response that I got when I sent out, and she's like, "Well, thanks a lot for bringing this to our attention," and it would basically behoove you to really get on the Forest Service to get that road fixed, so we can, that's not how, that's not how it works.
I'll tell Mark that, and I'll, I'll copy Shannon, but I'll tell him I need an answer for you for my Tuesday report and try to get those questions answered, and then that gives him the weekend and...
Yeah, and I see this really as a PUC issue. It's not, it's not cider, it's landline.
Absolutely.
And that's under PUC's auspices.
Mm-hmm.
And the fact that they can't drive their line, gosh, there's places around the country where they have to walk a line, you know, and I don't sympathize with that. I see the phone service as being a separate entity with when the Forest Service, if and when they repair that route.
And Paul's comments last night were that if they have to help them get access to a couple spots, you know, some minor repairs, they might be willing to do that, but they're not repairing the road, obviously, so it may be an ATV issue in trying to get, you know, a place where they can cross the creek. The water's been too high to even cross through there right now. You're climbing across dead timber to get across the creek, and you have to do it twice, because I've done it. And it really, it truly is a safety issue, and that's their standpoint right now, is it's a safety issue to bring people in there.
Well, I think one of the issues as well is, is that, look, a lot of these problems were already in place before the flooding in Wetmore. I mean, the folks on three eighty-six were having this issue long before the floods came, and so this is, this predated that, it is a cop out, that's exactly right. And it's above a PR issue, to me, it's more of a public safety issue.
Yeah.
Because when you have, when you have those folks up there that can call and say, "Listen, we have a significant amount of water coming, heads up, it gives us more time to react and to give people forewarning," and of course, they can't do that, because the lines are gonna be wet, and they can't make calls.
Let's see, up where we are, maybe we can follow up on...
I'll shoot him another email copy.
On Wednesday, we may be...
Yeah, maybe, maybe we do that, the fifth, the meeting on the, Tuesday, Wednesday, when we have the meeting, if we don't have a response by then, I say we...
Go forward with...
It worked a little better with AT&T when we got Mr. Gardner and Mr. Tipton involved, so...
Hey, wildlife, wildfire matters. Something Donna brought up, and I have Sheriff written beside it.
That was...
We're not gonna have any more wildfires, we made it against the laws.
No, that was...
We passed a resolution on that, huh?
Well, while we have Cindy here, this was wildfire matter, an interim committee. Did you see any information on that?
I don't know. I don't know anything about it.
It says, "CCI compiles a list of survey results for the wildfire matters interim committee." committee." Okay, so they're asking that appropriate staff review the attached two thousand and sixteen table and provide an update of any changes that your county has made to address wildfire mitigation and/or wildland urban interface areas. Additionally, please indicate if your county has adopted the International Building Code and which version slash year. And they're asking for a very quick turnaround by no later than Monday the fourth, so I just thought I would show you.
I did forward you that on the twenty...
Yeah, you probably did.
Okay. So, you want me to reply on?
You would be the appropriate staff.
Okay.
Yeah, you do.
Okay. And we did have our, um, commu... Our public meeting for the Community Wildfire Protection Plan for the Songris foothills last night. We had twenty-seven members from the public.
Yeah.
No elected officials, no candidates, but Paul Christine, USGS, I mean, there was a slew of representation from our stakeholders, including the Sheriff's Office, so it was a good turnout, um, lots, you know, ideas.
Good ideas.
Good ideas. Need more players.
Good.
Well, I was gonna go to it, but I felt sure that you would fill me in anything else we needed, 'cause we've worked pretty closely on it.
Got some great maps. In fact, Chuck printed some, so I'll see if I can put maybe the smaller versions on the bulletin board, and we're gonna be missing Chuck.
Yeah, well, that wasn't on the agenda, but that was a quick report. Anything else on this one?
Not on that.
Okay. Shannon, thank you, sir.
Yeah.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Be gentle.
Okay, the next item on the agenda is building codes.
May I... May I call on somebody with regards to that?
Sure, a minute.
Okay. Um, I'd like to call on Dale.
Okay, Commissioners, I just wanna make a comment, it's an informal comment. Uh, I'm gonna speak here as an individual, but I'm gonna speak from the percept... Perspective of being a seated member on the Planning Commission. And this is kind of information I think everybody should be aware of, because approximately a month ago, the Planning Commission had a meeting which resulted in a recommendation to the commission not to proceed forward with the building committee, or the building codes. And that was a valid thing. Process-wise, the Planning Commission did that recommendation. But I think it's important that we all recognize and be aware of that that particular recommendation, while it was process or procedurally correct, was content or fact without... Just to give you guys an idea of how that recommendation went down, and all I'm saying is, I've seen it in the paper that the... That the Planning Commission made this recommendation, and it carries great validity. I've heard it on the streets that the Planning Commission... And I just wanna point out that, yes, the Planning Commission made that recommendation, but they did so in a period of less than twenty minutes, from the time it was brought to our attention, given to us as an agenda item, uh, talked about the fact that there had been two, um, meetings, community meetings, uh, with about twenty... Twenty-eight people, I believe, that were... That made comments, with thirty-two comments, or maybe it was twenty-two. A very small subset of the population that had done so with more emotion and more, uh, rather than subject matter expertise-based or, um, other-based. So, from our perspective, and as a professional who spent a lifetime analyzing difficult, complex, and often controversial subjects, uh, one goes in with a clear mind, and that's what I thought the Planning Commission would do. In this particular case, when it came before us, it was said we need to make a recommendation. Then we've heard two community meetings, uh, these were the numbers, uh, it appeared that there was significant opposition from this subset, and they said that five years ago, there was a committee that was formed in the county, and they researched this issue, and at that time, they came up with a recommendation not to proceed with the building code. Based upon that, a motion was made by the Planning Commission to recommend to you all not to proceed with the building codes. The discussion that we had after that was among some of us that said, "Guys, we have done no research. We have heard no expertise. We don't have any idea what the situation in two thousand and seventeen is in the county other than this small subset of data. We can't make a recommendation based upon this." Uh, the question was called for, the vote was taken, it was five in favor, two opposed, and the recommendation went on to you guys. So, all I wanna do is point out to you and those that are listening, do not put a lot of weight on that particular recommendation, because it was not a fact-based recommendation, it was a historical perspective recommendation that occurred in a period of twenty minutes.
Of twenty minutes, and I guess I... I just wanna make some further comments.
I would like to comment about Dale's comment, whenever you get typed, too.
Thank you, Jackie. It may have been you, Jackie, that stated when new commissioners come into office, the building code, uh, rears its ugly head, the issue. And I just wanna say, in listening to everything, uh, both at two meetings that were public and to private citizens that have addressed me personally, um, I took an oath for all the people here, not just a few. And I think this is a serious consideration. It's going to affect our property values in the future. And I wanna thank you, and I applaud you for coming forward to let us know what actually happened. I know I'll state Dallas getting up several times, Dallas Anderson, and saying, you know, "This has been going on for thirty years, this question." Well, there's a reason it's been going on for thirty years. So, think about it. You've got people that have been here, that have lived here forever, and then you have new people that have moved into this valley with their concerns. We have to look at most people that we represent here. And I will reiterate, it's a... It's a matter of public safety moving forward. It's a matter of property values, and what kind of tax base are we gonna have going forward? Our budget's pretty slim as it is right now. And for the record, if we choose to put this on the ballot, I don't get to vote, 'cause I live in the town of West Cliff. That's what I wanna say.
Jackie. I think I would like to make a comment, and I had spoke to this prior to this. There's a lot of stuff going on in the newspaper and stuff, but when the plant... When the Board of County Commissioner wants the Planning Commission to look at something, they say that what the motion, which where was not a motion, done, and I'll go get the minutes and stuff, it said, "I would like..." Jay Prince is the one that brought it up, said, "I would like the Planning Commission to look in the... Look into passing the... Approving the two thousand and six building code and fire code." If you had asked us to do the research, we would actually did research, too. We base what we do, so when Dale Mullins says it wasn't factual-based, no, it wasn't. We're required, in our zoning ranks, to have a meeting to see what the public wants. We were not asked to do a fact-based research, because we'd still be doing it. We'd still be seeing how many inspectors we need, where they would... What vehicle they'd be driving, what office they'd use, what benefits they'd get. That is where you get into the fact base. So, I guess, next time you want the Planning Commission to do something, we need to be more clear, because what we did is what we were told to do. We were not told to do the factual analysis of a building code. Yes, the prior factual stuff was brought up through doing this before, but it... It doesn't mean that, so we were not told to factually see what we were gonna cost. And that's where we were.
Well, actually, what I did was I asked you to look into, make a recommendation, that's all I asked you to do.
Yes, and that's why...
And look into doesn't mean research?
No.
In my world, it does.
Well, I guess, you know...
But it's... It's Manny's, I appreciate where you're coming from.
Yeah. I'm just... And I am sticking up for the Planning Commission, saying, "We are so used to... We are, you know, point-blank, tell us what you want us to do. They serve at your pleasure. If you wanted factual, we'd still be working at it."
And I think if we look at the makeup of the Planning Commission, I think the majority of the members have served at least five consecutive terms of three years, so they were probably... Most of the majority were the ones that made the decision the last time they come around.
Mr. Chairman, I move that the Board of County Commissioners ask the county clerk to add to the ballot on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen, during that county election, a question to the electorate, whether to adopt the two thousand and six international building code and the two thousand and six international fire code in the unincorporated area of Custer County, and additionally, to ask the county attorney, Mr. Smith, to prepare the ballot question for the electorate that would accomplish adding the two codes to the election on November seventh, two thousand and seventeen.
May I have your second?
There's a second.
Moved in second, a discussion.
I don't think there's any way I can get this something prepared and have it ready by September eighth as a ballot question. It's... It's more than just saying, I mean, the way it was phrased, I think it needs to be a whole lot more specific than that, 'cause we're not talking about adopting the whole code, I don't think.
I think we are.
Well... Well, okay, that was my input.
What did it say?
Yes, ma'am.
For clarity, I would like to ask if it's going to be just the two thousand and six IBC and the IFC that you're proposing, because on prior occasions, Mr. Prince has said that he wanted a uniform code.
I never, ever used that part, ma'am, and you need to show me...
Why did you send me down, sir? And why did you send me down?
Please, please, one at a time.
Okay, I've been consistent from day one that I want to follow the same codes as West Cliff and Silver Cliff.
Okay, well then, sir, that would be the International Building Code, the International Residential Code, the International Mechanical Code, the International Fire Code, the International Existing Buildings Code, and the International Energy Conservation Code.
I'm not gonna discuss this further. I made my motion with just two codes. I didn't discuss a single another one. You've... We've heard you, we've heard your comments many times. I made my motion with two codes, the International Building Code, the International Fire Code, the two thousand and six version of both. Vote no if you don't like it, so the public... Public needs to have the right to vote.
The public needs to have the right to have the information.
Well, please, folks, let's be respectful. Go ahead. Are you through?
No, actually, I am not. Um, in the pamphlets from the ICC, which is the International Code Council, um, it states in here that "The system is so well-developed that the true complexity of the process is obscured to many. What I have been asking for on numerous occasions is more information given to the public." Now, this is going to go to ballot without this information given to the public. We are left up to do all of the research on these codes ourselves, when this information should be coming from our commissioners who are proposing this.
I think as a voter, you need to do your own research on any... Any topic that comes up for a vote, so you understand the ramifications.
Well, sir, in all respect...
I'm not saying you need to author it, but what I'm saying...
I feel that as the commissioner, you should do your research as well.
Okay, Katie, thank you. I saw... You had your time, thank you. Anybody else? Yes, ma'am.
What about the financial impact? Is that gonna be included in the motion to be prepared for the ballot? People can't do all this research.
Ma'am, we have a motion on the floor of what he wants to do, and all the ramifications of that are not part of this. I appreciate it from a discussion. Do you wanna look at... Will the financial impact be looked at?
My feeling is that if the electorate decides they'd like to have this as part of our code, Planning and Zoning Code, it'll go back to the Planning and Zoning Commission to come up with a recommendation to us to how and when they would like to implement it.
Did I answer for you?
Not really. So, Clint, how much time do you think we have?
If it's just gonna be that simple, yes or no on adopting the two thousand and six building code and the fire code, I suppose I can have it ready for you at the... For your... Our next meeting on September fifth.
I need a resolution, too.
Right. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
Yeah, so, I've been to three meetings, uh, the Planning Commission hearing, uh, the YAS hearing, as well as when the Planning Commission sat down and took a vote. Uh, you know, I find it really interesting that we're gonna take a minority report from what happened at the Planning Commission and bring it in. But more importantly, my question is that Commissioner Hood said that, you know, "This has been going on for thirty years." You know, there's a reason why it's been going on for thirty years, but my question is, why the rush? Why the rush to put it on this year's ballot as opposed to getting information out to citizens as to what impact this is really going to have for the campus? Because without information, you don't want people to make decisions without information. I mean, I don't wanna go into surgery, and a doctor doesn't have the information as to what he's doing and why he's there, and that's what you're asking citizens to do.
Please don't become emotional. Go ahead.
Everybody else has gotten emotional, the board has gotten emotional, people out here. I'm emotional because it affects my life. I'm sorry if it offends you that I'm emotional, but I'm... I can't dial it back. Uh, you know, I need to know, you know, how much is this gonna cost when I build a place? What in addition is it gonna cost me with these building codes? Not just time, but also money. You know, I need to know this information before I can make a rational, responsible decision when it goes on the ballot. You know, and my question is, why two thousand and six building code? I mean, the building codes are changed every three years. If this is truly a safety issue, would not the two thousand and fifteen make it more safe for the community as a whole than two thousand and six? Or did they decide in two thousand and fifteen that people didn't need to be quite as safe? And if we're going to adopt it, why two thousand and six? When the election's gonna take place in two thousand and seventeen, we're gonna have new building codes in two thousand and eighteen. I mean, it just doesn't seem that we're going about this in the right... Uh, right way. You know, Dale said that the...
Two minutes, go ahead.
That's fine. Dale said that the decision that was made at the Planning Commission was not based on fact, and so therefore, that decision should not be listened to. If we're going to do something that's based on fact, then let's do it based on fact. Put together a committee that will actually look at this so that citizens know what is going on. Don't ask us to do the same thing that Dale said that the Planning Commission did, which is to make a decision that is not based on fact. Thank you.
Thank you.
So, if I'm understanding correctly, um, Mr. Prince is asking that this be put on the ballot with the details to follow after we voted on it, how is that any different than Nancy Pelosi saying, "We'll figure it out when we get there"? Thank you.
Okay, any other questions? Now that you've all interrupted, I'd like to have a chance to make a few comments as a commissioner, okay? There's been a lot of discussion on the building code. My take on it is this, that we have had public meetings, we had a public meeting with a lot of people there to talk about it, everybody there spoke against it, nobody spoke in favor of it. I haven't... I agree with part of what you're saying in terms of what does the code possess, and I don't think we need all of the things that that code may have. I look at things, what do we need? I think some of the things that we need to look at, as an example, is that we have something in our code that you try to build in a fire-safe manner, that we have some mitigation around the facilities to make it a little safer, that we have, uh, caps on the chimneys, some of these things that's to resist sparks. But to me, right now, I don't know what this is, you know? I agree with you, this is a point where we... We need to come to an outside group working. But at this point in time, folks, I... I cannot and I will not support putting it on the ballot.
I just have a quick question. If you do adopt these codes, are y'all guys able to dissect it down to where you feel they will fit everybody's needs? everybody's needs in this community, or is it the entire?
I had a discussion, I had a discussion with the fire chief regarding this. And there is some interest from a fire safety standpoint.
I'm talking about building codes and fire codes.
Just a minute, just a minute, just a minute. And, and part of the fire safety standards would be involved in part of the building code. And the suggestion that he had when we were visiting was that pull together a task force, either appointed by the commissioners, appointed by the fire department, work on something or whatever, and go through it and try to address a few specific issues. Don't have a whole whitewash of everything, but some issues that we feel are potentially could be life-threatening. And issues that we feel could have ramifications of things, just like a snow load is an example. And we do have a heavy snow in this country. A lot of times I've seen in the past where we have four or five feet of wet snow, we lose, we lose roofs, the cadium. But again, with all we've had and the feedback that I've had from the general public, and from, and I, I, in my gut, I think we need a building code. But as elected official, and what I have heard, at this point in time, I don't think it's ready to go onto the ballot. So... Oh, I thought you were waving at me to say something. Any other discussion? Yes, sir.
I think it's completely irresponsible of the Board of Commissioners to even suggest that this go on the ballot.
Absolutely.
And an abdication of your responsibility to inform the public of what they're even voting on. And to say that it's up to each individual's responsibility to educate himself on something so complicated. I mean, how thick is that book?
The sideburns and the other books that go with it.
That's just, that's ridiculous.
Okay. At this time, I'll call for the question. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Aye. Motion carried. The next item we have on the business will be, health insurance, I guess. As long as you had several here you wanted to...
Brenda sent us an email.
Thank you, sir.
That Jake Zender from BHA would like to do a presentation regarding health insurance quotes for 2018 to the commissioners sometime around the week of September 18th. And he wants to know what time during the day do you have available.
Could we maybe take a quick five-minute break? Jenny, can you hold around? Come on, make a five-minute break, folks, and we'll come back.
Okay.
Let's call the board back to order. It is 11:20. The next item on the agenda is health insurance. Is that what you had?
Well, it was that Brenda was approached by another person, and they're looking for us to come up with a date where they can do a presentation, the week of September 18th.
This is, well, Bob, this is the same guy that did a presentation last year. But just so you know, I have two quotes already, so this would be the third one.
So before budget, which budget should be done by the 15th of the month, so this, you probably want to do it before the 15th, so we have all that information.
What day of the week do we want to do it?
About the 13th.
Okay, what time?
I don't...
You want me to just get a hold of him and ask him?
Yeah, he could do it in the morning. For me, that would be profitable.
Switch to the board on the 13th and then let us know.
Okay.
Okay, next.
Okay, next is the fact that we all received an email from Paul Cresspin. I don't know if you all had a chance to look at that, but he was looking to sit with him on discussions of issues of mutual interest, and he listed several dates. And I didn't know if either one of you had a chance to look at that. He said he would pick us up around 10 o'clock and we would return to West Cliff around 3:00. So I'm making the assumption we talked about looking to the south of us. There were issues in the county.
I think what Paul is wanting, Paul is the San Carlos District Ranger. And we had talked shortly after the fire that we would like to see some of the damages and some of the things that are happening. We've got a tremendous amount of use up in South Colony. We've got some other areas of concern on the forest. And if I look at this, I think Paul, what Paul is talking about is just to pick us up so we can go out on some of the things you said. You'd like to see South Colony. And this, this is a, I'm sure, because that's what we talked about in an April meeting.
Right.
And he and I talked last night about that, too. It's a fam tour.
And what did he say?
It's a familiarization tour.
Yeah, I mean, there's no, there's no, it's an educational familiarization. I don't know if we got any specific contentious issues right now.
Well, yeah, he wants to talk about the South Colony issues, like you said, maybe some permits and some fire bans and stuff, and, and South Heart Scrabble was on, and he mentioned the third, and I can't remember what it was.
Yeah, there's no way that we'd see Heart Scrabble right now without...
Well, we can drive you in almost all the way, but if you want to go see the last part, it's about an eighth of a mile hike in, so...
So that's... What date would be convenient for you? And you, excuse me.
Could probably do it, Jen. I'm going to look at those. He needs to see the dates. It's the 18th. Look, that's a Monday.
I'm fine with the 18th.
You okay with the 18th?
Just hit another time right here.
He says he'll pick us up at 10:00 and we'll return to West Cliff at 3:00. 10:00 to 3:00. Is that good for everybody?
Yep.
So I'll contact him and confirm. I just need that paperback. Can I have that paperback, please?
Budget workshop.
Okay. I'd like to propose having a budget workshop with Donna Hobby and Paul or John Paquette next Friday, September 8th, at 1:00 in their offices down around the corner, because she's got to pull a lot of information, and she just requested it would be easy if she could just be there so she could pull the information as we need it.
Okay, what time, Friday?
1:00.
Okay. In Donna's office?
Yes.
Great. Review?
I'm going to be doing, I suggested, next Friday. I've got in the morning Chuck, and then Donna right after. I wanted your input, and we need to schedule Brenda's review. Uh, well, I need input to do Donna's and Chuck's, if you want to say anything. If you don't, that's fine. But the one we need to do, the three of us, is Brenda.
Yeah.
So, you're asking if we have input into those two to get them to you before?
The 8th.
Right. And then it will just be the three of you having that...
One-on-one.
One-on-one, I mean.
One-on-one. Okay, but then the three of us have to do Brenda.
That would be convenient.
Uh, how about the morning of the 19th?
I cannot do that, do I?
Okay.
Would the 18th work?
You, I'm sorry.
Would the 18th work? Sorry. Or Friday the 15th?
We could do Friday the 15th.
The 18th, we got that tour.
Yeah, we have the tour on the 18th.
Wait a minute, I got the tour on the 18th. That's, oh, I thought we were doing the Paul thing on the 11th. That's the 18th?
The 18th.
Mine was the 18th. Okay. I'm okay on the 15th for the review also, if you want to do that.
15th?
Either you like, you tell me, 15th?
Can do it on the 15th. You want to do the morning?
Sure.
10? 10, so Brenda, 10:00?
And, you see, 10?
10:00 on the 15th.
Got it.
Cut it? I didn't approve a leave request for you that day, did I?
No.
Okay.
I wouldn't let you in.
Oh, what else do you have?
That's all I have.
Yeah, if that's all I have on the agenda, does anyone have anything else at this time? If not, I will declare the Board of Custer County Commissioners adjourned at...
Wait, 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 wait. What about support staff meeting?
Well, that's, that's not a part of our...
Oh, oh.
Do you want to make it a part of the commissioners' meeting?
I think it is.
I was going to say, usually it is, usually it is a part of it.
All right, we'll just, I was going to adjourn and go to the staff meeting, but while you're all here, we'll just go to the staff meeting. The floor is yours, folks. Yes, ma'am.
Okay, well, we were informed by Bill Nobles, the CSU Regional Director in Pueblo, that each of you had received an email asking for a committee of people in the agent search thing. And I just wanted to check on that. Sarah and I are both are trying to phase out of our positions upstairs. And this is just the beginning process to select this group of people that you want in that committee. And then once you have done that, then they will start. But if they don't get that in a quick...
We've already selected somebody.
Oh, you have already?
I'm the commissioner, and that's what I understood Bill to say, is he wanted a commissioner first.
Oh, only a commissioner?
He showed me the, I got the email. So I'm going to call him today and ask how to proceed going forward. But between us today, he agreed that I would be the commissioner.
Okay, okay. Because each step, you know, just takes...
Right.
You know, they have to create the announcement and then post it, and so...
Yeah, I got all that. Okay. Let me come and visit you, let me come and visit you. But that decision was made between us today.
Okay, I did, we did not know that. Okay, all right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for bringing it back, because we damn sure could have forgot it. Next item, somebody else here?
Well, I just want a clarification on the, on the budget, since I wasn't in on some of the things because I'm not an elected official. It says on the budget thing that we are to budget up to 3% for raises. Is that correct? That's what it said, and so I'm just trying to get the budget.
It said up to 3%, and that can be across the board, or it can be distributed as merit.
So I'm just trying to figure out how I'm supposed to budget here. Is that what we're supposed to do?
Yeah, and then we're going to look at what everybody comes to the table with.
Okay, so I guess I would add on to that. It says up to 3%, so we're not going to have one office coming in asking for 5, and one for 7, and one for 3.
When we have our individual budget meetings, those are times that we can get down to to additional discussions.
So there could be.
This is, it could be. I'm not saying it will or...
So even though it says 3%.
Because all we're asking is just for a number, a number of starting places to pull together.
And let me just interject here. We still haven't seen what insurance increases are going to be. That's why that statement was made.
Correct, but the reason I'm phrasing it the way I have is, in the past, it is said 3%. 90% of the offices come in at 3%. Someone comes in and asks for 7 or 10 and gets it. And let me tell you, that doesn't make things real comfortable around here, because they're published in the paper and everybody knows what everybody makes. And I just wanted, if...
I think we were just trying to be...
The conversation that has occurred in the past has been, "Why did I get 3 and they get 10?" And I say, "I don't know. You have to ask the commissioner."
Well, there may be none.
"Well, what did you ask for? Well, I asked for 3 because that's what they said."
And, and we're saying, until we sit down and look at everything, that's why I said "up to." I clarified that with Donna. There could be no percent.
Right, but that's what I'm saying. So you're not going to give somebody way more than 3. It's up to 3.
We have to look at all of the figures, okay? But we are asking the elected officials up to 3%. If you have an extenuating circumstance that you want to bring to the table, okay? That has to be justified.
And I would not be opposed if we have the monies to go more than 3%.
Okay.
It's going to come down to what...
But for your budget, we're saying up to 3%.
Give us 3, and then we can see where everything fits together.
Okay.
And where, where I call...
Okay, I'm just telling you, it gets real awkward when you do 3 and another office does 10, even though they were told 3, and then they get the 2.
That's not happening with three years that I'm here that I'm aware of.
It happened two years ago, I would argue.
Three years ago?
Two years ago.
Two years.
And who did we give 10% to?
Do you want me saying names in an open meeting?
Sure, it's like information.
I don't know if it was 10, but it was way above 3. Ms. Hobby received a huge increase, way above everybody else. And of course, we were aware of it. I came in, asked why.
Wait a minute, wait a minute, you have two Ms. Hobies.
Okay, Jackie Hobby. I came in and asked why, when it was brought to my attention. You and Kit and Lynn said, "Well, it was, she took on additional duty. She did this, this, and this." But of course, my people are going, "Well, why didn't you ask for more for us? Why did you just ask for 3?" Because that's what I was told to ask for. And then it's happened in previous years.
And Jackie is an appointed personnel, or your employees are your selections.
So our employees are treated differently than appointed personnel?
Appointed personnel serves at the pleasure of the commissioners and has, in most cases, have more responsibility than some of them. You're the supervisor, you're the boss in the, in your office. She's the boss in her office.
Correct.
And as such, she has more responsibilities than some of the other employees may have in that office.
Correct. But so you're saying that our employees are treated differently than the appointed?
No, I'm not saying that at all. I'm saying we look at the responsibilities that they have and go from there. But back to the question you asked. We'll, we'll work on this, but back to the question you asked. I think I'm speaking for the three of us when I say, "Give us a 3% figure and we'll see how that balances out." And if there's cases we need to do more, I would like to see some, and this is me speaking as an individual, but I'd like to see some cases made for some additional salary adjustments.
Okay, perfect. I just, I just wanted to know, because I've heard, because of the evaluations, and you were saying, "Rain goes when you come," and I'm like, "But if we're just doing 3%, I don't know how to budget that." So I just should budget 3%. That's what I just wanted.
Your evaluations should not have a percentage on them.
Well, they don't. I'm, I was, I just wanted a clarification on that. So for budget purposes, we're going up to 3%? But we can ask during the hearing for more?
Yeah, ask for more. But this gives us a total number, a total number when we first push the, you know, we do the first pencil pushing, we've got some kind of a plateau to start from, and then we go from there.
Okay, I just wanted, I just wanted to clarify that.
And we've got to look at possibly additional personnel that doesn't even exist right now in departments.
Okay.
So we've got to have some sort of baseline, and that's what we're asking.
Okay, Murphy, I just wanted a clarification on that, because I was working on it and I...
That's a good question. Appreciate that.
I'll throw out another budget, just because the two of you sit on the E-911 authority. So, code red has typically been, it's the alert notifications system. So, Code RED has typically been, it's the alert notification system, reverse 911, even though it's trademarked, but it's typically been in the emergency management budget, and I did ask to put that on E-911, so I just want you to have a chance to think about it before that September meeting. My feeling is it should be in the OEM budget, because then that makes me more competitive for the grant funding to the program, and if we start cutting that budget, we lose some of those grant fundings. But it doesn't mean that that should not be reimbursed out of the E-911 authority board, because that's about a $5,000 annual expense. So, I just, you know, I don't know how familiar we are with how it's been in the past, but basically, if my program budget is funded 44% by DHESEM, then you're picking up the rest of that, which essentially means you're picking up all of Code RED and some of those other things. So, it makes me more competitive for more money in the grant. So, I, I want to...
Well, I hear where you're coming from, but that meeting isn't scheduled until September 21.
No, I just, I just want to let you know what my thoughts are, that I'm going to put it in my budget, as we always have, but I just want you to be thinking before that discussion in September, if you have any questions or anything, so that we can discuss that ahead of time.
Did you request that that be on the 911 agenda?
I did, I asked Samantha. So, I'm just giving, throwing it out there for you guys, for, to know that it's going to be on that agenda, where my thoughts are.
Appreciate that.
Okay, next?
Have you handled, I've got where the cleaning crew is, crew is not going to be in here all the time. At 4 o'clock, the vacuum is, you can hardly do anything when the vacuum is going between 4 and 5.
It's the first time I hear that. Is that every day?
Well, here recently, some of the time, they've been coming from after 5, but when they are here at 4 to 5, we do have an issue with the vacuum.
And I thought that Jazz said last night that they were going to be sleeping at 5.
Are they? I noticed a couple of times.
They didn't come till 5 last night, yeah.
Because I know a couple of times they didn't show up.
Said you wanted to verify that. You might, I think, Brenda, did you send a email to Mackenzie? Was that when we talked about it before?
I did not mention to her about the vacuuming issue, but...
Well, I thought somebody, you didn't, I thought somebody sent that email about it, and Mackenzie said that she would not, that it was going to be 4 to 5, she would not change it.
That was, that was quite some time ago.
That's when it first started.
Yeah. So, but she did say something about that.
Let me follow up with her. Yeah. Because it is very hard, I mean, even though I hear you. Yes, I hear you.
Okay. What else?
Hmm? You're late.
Yes, Jackie?
I was looking at my watch.
I said, what else? I thought you might have something.
Staff meeting.
Okay, anything else for the, the good of the crew? Thank you for being here. Keep working together, and let us know what you think.